Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd, 2023 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Established by state law, the commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents appointed to four-year terms by the city council. The Planning Commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. The Planning Commission is a policy implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is a final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with staff in our city's planning division. They are responsible for coordinating enforcement of the zoning ordinance and related policies. Thank you for joining us this evening. We encourage your participation whether you're an applicant or member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly during general public comment as well as for each agenda item. With that, I will call this meeting to order and proceed to the roll call. Commissioner Barnes?
Good evening, President.
Commissioner Eric?
Present.
Commissioner Farrick?
Present.
Commissioner Riggs?
Present.
Commissioner Schindler?
Present.
I am Vice Chair Doe. I am present. I'm stepping in for Chair Harris, who is absent. And that brings us to Item C, Reports and Announcements. Mr. Perata.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Doe and members of the commission. So just a few reports and announcements and updates that the commission may be interested in. So last Tuesday, the city council did review the proposed 123 Independence Drive project and specifically the Planning Commission's recommendation on the below-market-rate housing agreements for that project, as well as the recommendation on the investing tentative map. And they did accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve without changes. And then additionally, just a heads up, the city council is meeting next Tuesday night on the 10th, and they'll be also holding a study session on the proposed revisions to the housing element. So wanted to relay that information to the Planning Commission at this time. No additional updates. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? All right, then we will move on to D, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed in the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it's helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore cannot respond to non-agenda issues other than to provide general information. I will turn to our clerk, Ms. Beegan, to explain how members of the public can participate during this public comment period.
Thank you, Chair Doe. Regarding procedures for communicating, for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you have finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill a comment card out and bring it to me. With that said, I hand it back to Chair Doe.
Thank you, Ms. Beegan. Would you be able to let us know how many public commenters we have so we can check in that the three-minute limit is appropriate?
Currently, we have zero public commenters. I've not received any comment cards either.
Okay, maybe let's give it a few more moments. How about now?
There are no public comments.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll close that item and move to the consent calendar. There is one item, E1, Approval of the Minutes from September 18th, 2023. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you. A first from Commissioner Riggs to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
And a second from Commissioner Farrick. And if there's no questions or discussion, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
I vote yes with an appreciation to staff for the timeliness of the minutes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, and I'd like to echo Mr. Eric's comment.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. I was not present, but I watched the recording. So that is, I believe, six yeses, one absent, so the consent calendar is approved. Moving on to Item F, Public Hearing. Just want to check in with staff that your staff advised that we actually address Item F3 first, which has been continued to date uncertain, and to do so, we need to have a first and a second to vote on it. However, before doing that, for any members of the public attending and who would like to make a public comment, we'll go ahead and take public comment on this item. There will be no discussion or vote by the commission, but we can go ahead and take public comment. So I'll turn to you, Ms. Beegan. And I apologize, I did not read the project description. It's all right, I'm going to go back and so people know which project we're talking about. Sorry. The item is F3, Use Permit, Architectural Control, Lot Merge, Below Market Rate BMR Housing in Luffy, and Environmental Review, Ron Crittemeyer for O'Brien Drive Portfolio, LLC 1105, 1135, and 1165 O'Brien Drive in One Casey Court. This project is commonly referred to as 1125 O'Brien Drive Project. And now I will turn it to Ms. Beegan.
Sure. As of right now, we do not have any public comments in person or online.
Let's give it a few moments, just in case, since maybe people weren't expecting the Still none?
Thank you, Chair Doe. There are still no public comments.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. And now I'll look for a motion to continue to date uncertain, is that right?
Correct. And through the chair, I'll just take this opportunity to note that when the item is rescheduled, we will re-notice it with the same noticing radius, same publication in the newspaper. So those that would be interested in potentially participating in that meeting would have the same opportunity as this evening.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. It's a procedural question. If I remember correctly, when an item gets continued, we normally don't go through the process of voting to... If it never came forward to us, we're not in fact continuing it. It's just rescheduling. Is this a reschedule or is this a continuance? I'm confused as to what we're doing.
If I may let staff...
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to take that question. So, thank you, Commissioner Barnes. You know, I think there have been past times, and we will remember that we did not take this vote, but because, and more recently, we've looked at it, because we have scheduled the item, and it was on the agenda, even though it was continued, it's recommended that the Planning Commission vote to continue it versus hear it this evening. So it is required because it was scheduled, and as Commissioner Barnes will recall, there have been past times where we haven't done that, but we have in the more recent times taken a vote to continue an item.
Got it. So the machination we're doing now is we are in a sense agreeing with staff's recommendation to continue the item at the request of the applicant. Okay, got it. I can make a first for that.
Great, thank you, and thank you for that question. A first from Commissioner Barnes to continue this item to date uncertain. A second, Commissioner Schindler. Happy to second. Great. First from Commissioner Barnes and a second from Commissioner Schindler. And if there's no additional questions, we will vote on this. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that's six yeses, one absent, and the item is continued to date uncertain. All right, moving now back to Item F1. Use Permit, Chris Thomas, 85 Willow Road. Consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit for hazardous materials to install a new portable diesel emergency generator to service an existing commercial building in the C1 Administrative and Professional Restrictive Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines, Guidelines Section 15301, Class 1 exemption for existing facilities.
Pardon me, Acting Chair Doe. So I live between 500 and 1,000 feet from this location, and after receiving guidance from staff, I'd like to choose to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric, for...
Do I need to leave?
For this item, you should leave for the deliberation, public comment, and all of that. Thank you.
And then, are there any updates from staff or an applicant presentation?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Acting Chair Doe, Planning Commissioners, members of the public. Matt Pruder, Associate Planner in the Planning Division, and we do have a few updates. I will also start by saying the applicant does have a presentation and opening remarks they'd like to share following my initial updates and questions for planning staff. We received three public comment letters via email over the weekend following the publication of the staff report. I've shared each of those with the Planning Commission and also the applicant as well. We have printouts, I should say, of the comments at the back table for any members of the public in person who'd like to see them. And the comments are mainly concerned with expressing concerns regarding the use of diesel as a fuel choice instead of alternative sources of energy, potential pollution, noise, and safety impacts. And with that, I'm available for any questions, but if there are none, you may proceed with applicant presentation. Thank you.
Any questions before we move on to the applicant's presentation? No questions.
Okay, great, thank you. I will set up the screen, and our applicant in person, Chris Thomas, is here, and there's also a member virtually available, Jim Fulton, but I'll leave it to Chris, and I'll put that on the screen shortly.
Is it on? Okay. Yes, good evening. My name is Chris Thomas. I'm an architect, and my colleague, Jim Fulton, is joining us here through the computer there. So I am here to represent a tenant at 85 Willow Road that is at the northwest corner of Middlefield Road and Willow Road, and what we are seeking is permission to use a portable diesel generator in the event of a power outage. And this would not be located at the site other than during a power outage. It would, once the power was out, it would be brought to the site, and then once power is restored, it would be removed from the site. And wanted to also mention that it would only be used during the normal business hours. The plan is not to run it overnight. It's only to run it for the standard operation Monday to Friday of a business. And that we're seeking this approval specifically for the tenant there, not for the property itself. And we have some images here. The first image there shows what the portable diesel generator looks like. The height of it is eight feet, five inches. It's roughly the same size as a car, a little bit taller than a car. If we go to the next image there, okay, that's a photograph of what it looks like. It would be coming from our rental yard in Hayward, and that's where they're stored there, and then it'd be coming on a pickup truck. It would, when it comes to the site, it would be just sitting temporarily in the loading dock. The pickup truck would leave, and then when it's time to return it to the facility, the pickup truck would come back and take it back. Next slide, please. And then here we have photographs showing the location. That is the truck dock at 85 Willow Road, right behind those car chargers. Next picture, please. And that's another shot getting closer to it. We would be proposing putting that generator where you see that green bin, so it'd be on the left side. Next picture, please. Yes, okay. These are just different angles of the proposed location. Next picture. Okay, and then this is standing on the loading dock, looking out towards the parking lot for the property. Next picture. So the closest homes to this location are the ones on Paulson Circle, and you can see them in the distance there behind the trees. The closest homes are 180 feet from the proposed location where we would propose to put it. Is there any more pictures? I think that's the last one? That was the last one? Okay, all right, yeah, that was my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions before we move to public comment? All right, please have a...
Okay, thank you.
Speaking, turn to you for any public comment on this item.
Sure. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon in Zoom or by pressing star nine if calling in by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. I do see two online public comments. So I will start with Neil Vivi. Neil, you may unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
I'll be brief. I'm a resident on Paulson Circle, and I guess I just have concerns about having a diesel generator so close to homes. Kids regularly play on Paulson Circle, and, you know, I'd just generally be concerned about the noise. We've recently had a lot of power incidents in the area, and I guess I would urge the property owners to look into battery and solar rather than diesel generators. So my main concerns are noise and air quality, and, you know, there've been numerous issues in the past with that property, including like basketballs and other things. So we do know that the noise travels, and we do know that it is a disturbance. So with that, I'll just close my comment and be brief.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is, has a telephone number ending in 8986, so I will unmute you, allow you to speak, and you have three minutes. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, everyone, for their hard work on this and other items. I also live near the site in question, and I would just ask the Planning Commission to consider, is this something you regularly approve for buildings in our city that are very close to houses and families? And if it is not, you know, please consider that in your voting, as well as if it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any more public comments at this time.
Okay, I think people have had enough time to consider if they would like to take this opportunity to comment, so I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to the commission for any questions, discussion, and ultimately a vote. Would anyone like to start? Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. If I may ask staff through the chair, first, can you give us some guidance regarding the noise ordinance for the C1 zone when the C1 zone is adjacent to a residential zone? What flexibility do we have in terms of judging the noise from this machine?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Riggs. We have in the noise ordinance specific regulations that affect residential properties at the property line, and so, excuse me, the main, you know, focus here is that we're, you know, concerned with whether or not the noise level would increase above what's required at that nearest residential property line, which would be 60 decibels during the daytime hours and 50 decibels during the nighttime hours. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, I think I had another question. This would be to the applicant. Only because we've had an application before us, it was not for generators, but it was noise-making equipment that would not be limited to daytime use. So can, you did mention that the generators would only be for weekdays. Would they also be limited to work hours such as nine to six?
Yes, that is correct. They're limited to Monday to Friday during the work hours.
And are the work hours until six?
The hours that they told me were nine to five, so it's, yeah, it falls within your range.
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. Question to the staff, to make sure I understood that. So the, in a residential property which would be adjacent to a noise generating source, it's 50 decibels, excuse me, 60 decibels during the day and 50 decibels at night, is that correct?
That's correct. On the nearest property line adjacent. So in this case, it would be, I think, the rear property lines for these closest Paulson Circle properties.
Got it. So if I read the staff report, it says the nearest property line, the generator would be no closer than 185 feet from the nearest residential property line, and the noise rating of the generator would be 71 from a distance of 23 feet. So am I understanding that from, the nearest property is 185 feet, 23 feet from the generator is 71, so then there's an attenuation between the 71 that's at 23 feet, all the way down to what it would be 185 feet to the nearest residential property line? So just conceptually, is that what's being articulated in the staff report?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So do we have any sense, I mean, if it's 71 to 23, do we have a sense of what happens at 185 feet? Would it be perceptible?
I can't speak to exactly how perceptible it would be, but it would appear to be nominal given the distance. And I don't know if the applicant can speak more to that, given the distance change from the 23 to the 185.
Yeah, so the only number I was able to gather as far as the noise level was the 71 at 23 feet, so I can't say what the noise level would be at 180 feet, but I share the same thoughts as Mr. Pruder, that it would be well within the, what planning is considered acceptable for residential.
Thank you for that. I mean, I guess I'm sympathetic to the needs of a generator on site. I would think this would be a germane data point. I mean, if we're being asked to, if 50 and 60 are the benchmarks for the nearest property line, I think we would want to know at 183 feet, 185 feet, what that is. Does it or does it not exceed? I would think that's quite a germane point to the whole discussion. Because isn't that what we're solving for? I mean, if it exceeds, then we have an exceedance, and it's a problem. If it doesn't exceed, then, you know, we can check, ostensibly, a box can be checked that it clears that benchmark. Can someone help me with that? I guess I'll direct that back to staff. Isn't that what we're solving for? Specific to the noise aspect of this.
So maybe I'll just chime in here. So while it's not in the staff report, and a technical noise analysis was not prepared for the project, staff did look at the noise levels that were measured at the, I think we said 23 feet, and if you do a rough calculation based on some resources that we have that are certainly not, you know, a sound engineer, but it shows that it's substantially below the 50 decibels. So if you were to hold the nighttime noise ordinance in your mind, it's probably under 20 decibels, given some rough math that we can do at the staff level using some online resources. So by default, it would comply with the noise ordinance during the daytime as well as the nighttime. I will take this opportunity to note, I think the staff report's clear on this, during an emergency, the city's zoning ordinance, or sorry, city's noise ordinance, Title 8 of the Minnesota Code, Chapter 806, does exempt these equipment from the noise ordinance. That being said, staff did evaluate the applicant's proposal to ensure it would comply with that 60-decibel daytime limit. So does that help clarify?
It does. So in effect, if they're using it, they are, they have an allowance to use it, and this is a nice-to-know metric, is really what we're talking about. Okay.
That's correct. We do evaluate these while the noise, and you didn't ask for this, but I'm going to chime in to clarify, while the noise ordinance doesn't apply during an emergency, we do try to, through these use permits, evaluate, as Commissioner Barnes mentioned, to ensure that they would be as close as possible or below the threshold of that 60 decibels. That's a metric we try to adhere to, even though there would be exempt during the use of an emergency. Partially, I will say, because typically, they're permanently on site, and we want to ensure that testing complies. This is a little unique, since the applicant would bring the generator to the site during an emergency versus installing it permanently and testing. So typically, we can hold that 60 decibels as a testing requirement, and that's how staff can evaluate and ensure compliance regardless of what the noise ordinance says. So I wanted to make that clear as well. the noise ordinance says. So I wanted to make that clear as well.
Thank you very much. That's super helpful for me. As I kind of chunked through what we're, as I chunked through the issues that I see in this, I mean, of course, running power via diesel is anathema to me, but this is emergency power supply to a building in the event of a power outage. I'm noting that the generator is designed to meet all safety requirements of the city, Menlo Fire, San Mateo County Environmental Health Services Division, West Bay Sanitary District, and to meet air quality requirements, the applicant is required to obtain a permitting from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District for the proposed generator. So from an environmental standpoint, from an approval standpoint of relevant agencies, from a noise standpoint, from a need standpoint, and also saying that I'm sympathetic to alternative energy sources, but this is only for emergency backup. So for those, and hazardous materials would be safe and appropriate per the staff report's belief that the proposed use in quantities. So for that reason, I believe it's a necessary evil. I don't have further comments, but I will put a motion on the floor to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. A first from Commissioner Barnes, and thank you for that clarifying question about noise. I think even though it doesn't have to during an emergency situation meet the threshold, I think it's reassuring to neighbors to know that it effectively does. Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, I would just like to second the motion regarding the resolution to approve the use permit for hazardous materials, et cetera, per the staff report.
And a second from Commissioner Riggs. I have a few, Commissioner Farrick, I was just going to ask if anyone else had comments.
I actually have a question. I just hadn't, I didn't know the motions were going to come quickly. I have a question for the applicant that was prompted by a comment from one of the residents. Is battery or solar generators, were those options, and why, you know, tell us more about those options and if those were explored.
Oh, yes. So the battery option, I was told, the batteries aren't enough to power the building, to power the whole entire office building. There is batteries there to keep the servers going if the power flickers or if there's a small outage, but in order to keep the business operational and keep the building going, batteries wouldn't be sufficient to power it. And as far as solar goes, so the tenant in the building doesn't own the building, and for something that may or may not happen, because we don't know for sure if the power will go out, right, it didn't, it makes sense for them to make that kind of a large investment into a building that they don't own for something that may or may not occur, and when it does occur, may not be very long, so.
Oh, right. So you're saying that that exploration meant that the only feasible way for solar to make it work wouldn't be kind of like a trailer that arrives, it would be like the entire rooftop.
Like installing it, correct, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. And then the other question I had for staff is the number of generators in aggregate, has there been any kind of issues during times of power outage which seem to be frustratingly frequent this past year? Is there any known measure of like the, in aggregate, there's now more than one generator operating in those circumstances, and so do they add up to exceeding the noise ordinance? Or do we know?
Thank you for your question. I think that this question kind of creates a few points of discussion, but to start with, I think that the question of noise ordinance exceedance, I mean, it's definitely site-specific. So we may have, you know, multiple generators at a time that are powered on across the city, but I don't think that necessarily would create a circumstance where the noise ordinance would be, you know, an aggregate exceeded unless we had enough generators concentrated in one specific location, and the actual location of that noise, you know, crossed the residential property boundary, so to speak, and created that circumstance. And there's no way to exactly know that. I know that we've had other approvals in the last few years. I incidentally had assisted another commissioner question about understanding recent approvals that the city's made, and most of them are through the Planning Commission. Some have gone to the city council as part of larger projects, but a lot of those were for power reasons, for diesel generators, the same kind of circumstance where a diesel generator was required or requested for a project as a backup source of power. It's unclear whether those have been used a lot or significantly. I do know that the city has had sporadic power outages, especially this year with the earlier storms and wind, you know, kind of circumstances that came up. So it's safe to say that some generators probably have been in use, but we don't have a way of tracking that apart from knowing that it got approved. And likely, in most cases, we've had building permits and additional follow-up that they've had to do with BACMed, which is the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and this county's Environmental Health Division regarding the hazardous materials business plan if the size of the actual storage exceeds 55 gallons. And so there are other ways to track this through other means, but that would be outside of the scope of the city.
Okay. And then, thank you. That's helpful. And then, just because I don't know, are individual residents allowed to have a generator without going through the use permit process, or do they have to go through a similar process to commercial properties?
It's actually not allowed in residential zoning, so the answer would be no, simply.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you. I would love just an opportunity to expand on one of Mr. Pruder's comments. I had a similar question as one of our public speakers here tonight, just in terms of asking about the magnitude of the number of times this commission has approved similar requests. And so, ballparking it, it was roughly, to Mr. Pruder's analysis, about 10 over the course of the last three years. And I think that's relevant particularly to the public commenters who had asked about, you know, whether this was something that was done on a regular basis, so that the numbers sort of speak to that. To the instances where I sat in any of these decisions and these discussions, they were not temporary or sort of brought to the premise as needed diesel generators. These were sort of permanently located at the particular, at the applicant's property. So this was a little bit of a unique one, and sort of that much more temporary. So I think that was relevant, and I wanted to be sure that that was made, brought to the surface for the public commenter who was asking the question. I wanted to just also compliment the applicant on the level of detail on the public communications and public noticing. It's always beneficial for us to see the depth and breadth of outreach, because that is essential to our decision, our consideration and decision-making process. I think that level of detail, just in terms of addressing some of Commissioner Farrick's questions, is always beneficial as well, too. It's helpful for us to know what options were considered, and how they were evaluated, and why they were not necessarily the end outcome of the alternative power source. But I have, I reached a similar conclusion to, I think, a number of the other commissioners, as they've said, and this particular use case, this particular instance warrants the use permit, in my view. So that's the end of my comments, and I don't have any further edits or concerns with the motion and the second that have been put forth.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Can I ask a question to Mr. Thomas? I know you stated just now in response to Commissioner Farrick that batteries and solar, alternative energy sources are not sufficient. Did that analysis also include potentially, and I'm not an expert, nor pretend to be, a hybrid option whereby maybe you have, as a first resort, the maybe renting portable batteries, and then as a second, last resort, a smaller generator that potentially has less pollution and less noise? Again, I, this is hypothetical, but just addressing these concerns, real concerns from the community.
Oh, yes. So the way the, I'm not an electrician, but the way I understand that the building is powered, it would, they either need to have power from the grid, or they would need a source of power that could equal the power from the grid. So it'd be like a single source would replace the power coming in from the grid to power the building, as opposed to coming from multiple sources.
Multiple sources. Again, I'm not a, I just wanted to ask that question. And another hypothetical question, and just to staff, and again, this is, thank you for your patience. Hypothetically, who regulates generate, I mean, I understand this use permit for generators coming from the Planning Commission, but if we wanted to have a transparent, predictable set of rules within the city, so that applicants, tenants could plan ahead and not have to, you know, three weeks ago, a use permit was approved, and, you know, today it's not, which I'm not saying that's going to happen, is that something within a city's jurisdiction to regulate or phase out or ban generators or pollutant levels, or is that within state or federal?
Sorry about that. Thank you for your question. That could be a matter that the city council brings up, and, you know, maybe a policy decision that would have to be made. So it is possible through that lens, but I would say that currently, that's not the case.
Thank you, and thank you for your answer. So I'll just say, like my fellow commissioners, I don't think anyone loves a diesel generator, but I also realize, we all realize, a diesel generator is only run a few days in a year, whereas we have buildings that are, you know, source of emissions around the clock every day of the year. So again, in this instance, I will also support the use permit, given the circumstances, and believe that everyone has had a chance to speak or ask their questions, and we have a, just to refresh our memory, a first from Commissioner Barnes, a second from Commissioner Riggs, to approve the use permit for a temporary diesel generator. And I believe that we can move to a vote. There's no additional questions. Commissioner Barnes?
This is the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. That's five yeses, one recusal, and one absent, and the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Item F2. Zoning ordinance amendments for residential electrification. Consider and provide a recommendation to the city council to add Section 16.04.296 and amend Sections 16.04.120, 16.04.313, 16.18.030, 16.20.030, 16.60.010, 16.72.010, and 16.80.030. Of Title 16, zoning of the Menlo Park Municipal Code to allow electrification equipment in existing covered parking spaces, BG garages or carports, and to allow exterior enclosures for electrification equipment within the required side and rear setbacks for existing residential dwelling units in all zoning districts. Determine this action is exempt under SEQA Guideline Sections 15061B3 and 15183. Turn to staff for updates or presentation.
Yeah, thanks, Vice Chair Doe. I'm going to turn it over to Ori Paz, management analyst in our Sustainability Division, who will provide the staff report and any update, or sorry, the staff presentation and any updates. So he's joining us virtually, so I'll turn it over to him to give his presentation when he's ready.
Thank you, Kyle, and members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. Ori Paz, management analyst with the Sustainability Division and former planner, so happy to be back at my initial commission here tonight to share these zoning ordinance amendments to facilitate residential electrification. So this evening, we're going to give a brief background of the policy history that brought us to this point. We'll go over the current garage and setback regulations that have shown to be potential barriers for existing residential electrification. We'll overview the proposed changes that we've outlined in the staff report that was published last week, and we'll review a summary of the next steps and have an opportunity for questions and discussion. I will note for the commission that there was one piece of correspondence that was received ahead of the meeting from a resident in support of these proposed changes, and that was forwarded to the commission, and I believe has been made available at the meeting, should anyone take care to take a look at it. So diving into the policy background, the city council adopted a Climate Action Plan, or CAP, in 2020, and that was updated in 2021 to establish six priority strategies to reduce community greenhouse gas emissions to address the climate crisis. CAP strategy number one was to electrify 95% of existing buildings within the city, and this was selected for a couple of reasons. One, there's vastly more existing buildings than there are new construction within the city, and within the city of Menlo Park, electricity is provided by, and it's a clean energy, and it's 100% carbon-free, and there's options for 100% renewable through PCE, or put it in some clean energy. So replacing the gas-fired or, you know, methane, natural gas equipment with the electric equipment not only eliminates the emissions from that equipment and improves the air quality at the source, but it also improves our air quality within the community and reduces our community greenhouse gas emissions to help us stay on track with our goals to be carbon neutral by 2030 within the city of Menlo Park. So the city's made a number of efforts to promote voluntary electrification. We launched a permit fee waiver to eliminate permit fees for electrification projects, and that's been going quite well this past year. We've also published online resources and made process information available to help make the process more transparent in an effort to streamline these applications. And then we've also taken a look and begun an evaluation of possible regulatory barriers, both in the zoning ordinance and otherwise, to try to facilitate these projects. So before we get too much further along, I think we should pause for a moment and answer the question of what is electrification? And so, quite simply, it's replacing gas equipment with all-electric alternatives or zero-emission alternatives. And within home, these are things like your car, your water heater, furnace, stove. And tonight, what we're going to be focusing in on, because we're looking at the possible regulatory barriers, are the things that could be located within the garage. And so that would be EV chargers or electric vehicle chargers, heat pump water heaters, and then things that may be located within setbacks. And so those are things like the, again, heat pump water heaters if they can't fit within the garage or elsewhere in the home, and then battery storage systems and other heat pump, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment. So that's for space heating and cooling, which the heat pumps can do both in one. So you can replace a furnace with an air conditioner slash furnace with dual benefits. So that's what we're going to be talking about this evening. Again, really focusing on the garage and then those setbacks. And primarily, we're going to be talking about these needs for heat pump water heaters. So heat pump water heaters are very, very efficient pieces of equipment. They're much more efficient than their gas counterparts. However, they're not as fast at heating up the water. And so you'll see oftentimes that the tank sizes, the holding tank sizes are upsized, so that that demand for hot water can be met by a greater supply of hot water in the holding tank. And what that means is that the equipment sometimes cannot fit in what that means is that the equipment sometimes cannot fit in the, in the location of the old equipment that it's replacing. And so people look to other options, either within or around their homes, and garages and protective weatherproof enclosures. And setbacks are suitable locations for these heat pump water heaters, but the current regulations for garages and our setback regulations may prevent residents from placing equipment in, in either location. And that's something that we've heard through conversations with residents, commissioners and contractors who are working in this space. And so that's what we decided to take a look at. So here you can see a visual representation of our garage clear space requirements. So zoning dictates for most residential properties that two off-street or onsite parking spaces are required for dwelling, and a minimum of one of these needs to be covered. And so the cover parking requirement for garages or carports is that they have a 10 by 20 interior clear space. And so that's what we're talking about when we talk about this required clear space, is that 10 by 20 area for parking a vehicle. And currently, only vehicles are allowed within that clear space. And so things like a new heat pump hot water heater would not be allowed to be located in, in that area, which is proving challenging for some folks who are looking to electrify their existing homes. Within the setbacks, well, taking a setback, every property has required yards or setbacks that limit how close buildings and structures can be to the property lines. And so it varies by every zoning district. And then certain equipment is currently allowed within these required yards. So your air conditioner compressor or heat pump condensers, and the kind of fan units, those are allowed to be located within the setbacks, provided they're screened and meet the noise ordinance limitations at the residential property lines, which were mentioned earlier this evening, but I'll go ahead and restate, and that's a 50 decibel limit during nighttime hours and a 60 decibel limit during the daytime hours at that residential property line. So provided, you know, those limitations are met, you can locate equipment there, but you cannot currently locate protective enclosures within the setbacks. And again, focusing on the heat pump water heaters, which are not weatherproof, like some of this other equipment, that becomes problematic if, if folks are not able to locate the heat pump water heater in the home or in the garage. And so that's where that protective enclosure comes into play. Here's a, a high level summary of the, the changes that are being proposed. We do have a, a copy of the more detailed modification table that was included in the staff report, and can go through that in detail if needed. But I'll just go through this table quickly. And the, the current regulations are outlined in the column on the far left, our proposed changes and the effect of the changes on, on the right. So focusing in on the garages, currently only cars are allowed in the required 10 by 20 clear space. And again, that's based on the number of vehicles. So if it's a two-car garage, that would be a 20 foot by 20 foot required clear space in the garage. What we're proposing is to allow tankless water heaters and EV chargers that are mounted 48 inches above the slab, anywhere within that area, they'll very likely be along the walls. And we're also proposing to allow up to two, three foot by three foot spaces in the rear corners of the garage for electric equipment. And what this will do is balance the needs to preserve parking in the garages or on driveways, and then allow electric equipment. Again, primarily, we're talking about the heat pump water heaters within the garage. I will note that our definition of electric equipment includes heat pumps to replace natural gas water heaters or furnaces. It also includes electric vehicle chargers and battery storage systems. And for all of these things, the zoning that we're proposing to change may be flexible about the location, but they will all need to meet all of the manufacturer specifications, the building code requirements, and any fire protection district requirements, which are particularly important when considering battery storage systems. So I wanted to make, make note of that. As we talk about the setbacks, again, current requirements allow air conditioners and heat pump equipment to be located within side or rear yard, provided they're screened and they meet the noise ordinance limitations. And we're proposing to allow those protective enclosures for the, that electric equipment. And again, primarily for the heat pump water heaters, which are not weatherproof. And, and need that additional protection. And so what this would do is allow a footprint of 16 square feet for protective enclosures and set an egress setback at three feet from the, the side property line to make sure that in the event of an emergency, folks are able to leave their home in a timely manner, and emergency personnel are able to, to access the home through those avenues. So going through the text in a more visual format, here are the proposed garage changes, again, allowing tankless water heaters and EV chargers 48 inches above the slab, anywhere in that red required clear space area, anticipating them to be really only along the, the perimeter, and then allowing electric equipment into three foot by three foot rear corner areas as shown here. And then an illustration of the proposed setback changes. So again, this is an R1U zoning district example. And so you'll note the, the setback varies by, the side setback varies by zoning district. And so in this example, right, you can see that the protective enclosures are permitted within that green space, but they can't be closer than three feet from the side, and they can't go into the setback more than, more than four feet. We also established some parameters for the, the maximum area, which is 16 square feet, which based on the, the typical size of this equipment tracks with the three foot by three foot area that we've allowed for within the garages, accounting for exterior construction. So you're looking at a four by four enclosure to get a three by three interior space. The maximum height would be nine feet, six inches, which is consistent with a single-story daylight plane. And then the maximum encroachment, again, is four feet with a requirement to preserve three feet of space between the side or rear property line and the equipment enclosure for egress. And with these, again, the equipment must comply with noise ordinance limitations. We'll state them again, 50 decibels at residential property line during nighttime hours, 60 during the day. And in our analysis, we worked with a former commissioner, Tom Cabot, to help us identify some of the noise levels, which, which admittedly were quite frustrating to try to get out of some of the manufacturers, to confirm that there, there is equipment that will be able to meet these limitations. And our understanding is that the, the enclosures themselves will also help to attenuate some of the noise that's generated from the operations of the fan and the, and the condensing unit that's in, again, primarily the heat pump water heaters. So proposed changes continued. Just to address the fact that the small table that I showed you and the long modification table within the staff report vary in length. So in order to make these seemingly simple changes, we, we made sure that we had a very comprehensive and consistent approach throughout the zoning ordinance. And so there were a number of foreseen consequences of making these changes. And so we went through the zoning ordinance and made all of those changes. And so I appreciate Vice, Vice Chair Doe for, for reading out the, the lengthy description. And I was nodding along to make sure we got everything right again. So we created a definition of the electric equipment and enclosures so that it could be referenced elsewhere in the ordinance. We modified the development regulation definitions for floor area building coverage and some landscaping to make sure that when people proposed these on their plans, they wouldn't have to do floor area and building coverage diagrams, which could be a lengthy process and counter to the, the intention of, of this. And then we also modified the off-street parking, again, to allow those tankless water heaters and then specify the electric equipment could be allowed in garages and carports. And then modified our encroachments section to create a table, which having been in planning, I liked the table a lot better than the previous version. And it also specifies the electric equipment enclosure allowances for the side and rear setbacks. And then to top it all off, we wanted to make sure that there was no confusion about these properties that may take advantage of these allowances. And so we updated the non-conforming structures section to make sure that it was clear that these encroachments do not create a parking nonconformity, so that in the future, there's no confusion about that implementation. As we talk through the process and next steps, I want to take a look back and, and thank the environmental quality commission, because we did present an earlier version of, of the proposed amendments to the environmental quality commission in February of this year, and we included their recommendation, evaluated their recommendation and included it in the staff report that you received. Tonight, we're bringing this to, to you, the planning commission, for your recommendation to the city council. And then we'll be bringing this to the city council for our first and second reading, and hopefully for, for adoption later this fall. And again, with, with the ordinance, it would become effective 30 days after the second reading, which we anticipate would be sometime in December. And then we plan to publish outreach materials and update our review process to be ready to go upon the effective date. So with that, I will reread our staff recommendation, and we recommend that the planning commission review and adopt a resolution recommending the city council approved zoning ordinance amendments to facilitate electrification, electrification of existing buildings by allowing encroachments in garages and electric equipment enclosures into the required side and rear setbacks. We included the draft resolution as attachment A. The draft ordinance is included as exhibit A to attachment A. And the effect of this ordinance would be to add section 16 oh four two nine six, which is a definition of electric equipment, and then amend the, the other sections as we went through in the staff report in more detail. Now return it to the commission if there's any questions, and we are available to answer those, and here to support discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Any clarifying questions? Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. Thank you, Mr. Paz, for that helpful presentation. I have a clarifying question as it relates to some of the language around the garage clear space encroachments. So there are references to, so those, those encroachments can be, I'm going to check, be sure I've got it right, up to three by three, and there can be up to two of them. The staff report refers to their location in the garage as being in the back, and the proposed amendment, the proposed ordinance changes refer to them as being in the corner. And in both cases, I think they're referred to as being non-contiguous. So could you give us a little more clarity on what back and/or corner and/or non-contiguous would mean in the context of these amendments, and what it would mean in terms of enforcement? So there's, my first part of my question is just definitional. The second part of my question is, why were those attributes presented as parameters for, for, for those, those encroachments in the garage clear space?
Thank you. Kyle, I'm, I'm happy to take this question. And I've returned us to the slide with the exhibit that illustrates this. I think it may be helpful here. The intent is to allow up to two, three by three encroachment areas in the rear corners of the garage. And this is to preserve the usability of the required clear space as much as possible for, for parking. There is no overnight parking allowed on the street within the city of Menlo Park. And so it was important that we balance the, the desire and, and need to facilitate existing electrification with that other parameter. And so we worked with our transportation and planning division staff to, to find a balance that was, that was suitable. And this is where we landed, again, to, to make sure that someone looking to still park in their garage would be able to. Because if, if we allowed it in any corner, you can see if we shifted these green squares towards the front, it may preclude someone from entering their garage with a vehicle.
Okay, thank you. If I may, through the chair, ask a follow-up question. I, I think the definition of corner is fairly straightforward in terms of the, the illustration as well as common vocabulary. I would like to clarify that rear in this case means opposite the car entry door, as it's drawn here. That's what rear means. And what I'm still not clear on is how non-contiguous would be defined and enforced.
So through the chair, I'd be happy to, to answer that follow-up question. So non-contiguous would, would mean that the two, three by three areas would not be allowed to be directly adjacent to each other. So you can see in, in this illustration, they're in the separate corners. And so the idea would be to make sure that you, you don't end up with a situation where you essentially have six feet of the, you know, back left or back right area of the garage, and it's just a solid area of, of equipment, which again, could, could limit the ability to park a vehicle in the garage.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm going to take an interpretation, like directly touching each other, right? No space in between them. Okay. Thank you for the clarifying question.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions before we move to a public comment? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, thank you. And we can take this into the further discussion. I'll leave that up to, to you, Mr. Paz. Are there other jurisdictions where something similar to this in terms of positioning of exterior equipment has taken place? And maybe when we get into the, the other, after public comment, you could talk a little bit about that. And, and more specifically, some of the, the noise generation associated with some of the equipment, and how it relates to, you know, houses on the other side of it. So why, why don't we? That's a little bit longer, I think, than a clarifying question. So let me, I'll plant that seed, and then we'll come back to it after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. There's no further clarifying questions. Let's move to public comment. Ms. Egan?
Thank you, Chair Doe. As a reminder, sorry, you're welcome to speak on the public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if calling by phone. If you're participating in person, please fill out a public comment card and bring it to me. At this time, I do see one hand raised, raised online. So, two hands raised down. So the first person is Angela Evans. Angela, you may now speak. You will have three minutes to speak. And please unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angela Evans. I'm a resident of Menlo Park. I am also on the environmental quality commission, but I'm speaking here as an individual. I first want to give a really big thank you to city sustainability staff, especially Ori, for a truly excellent, in my opinion, staff report and presentation. That is in most of the major areas aligned with what I believe to be EQC's intent. It's really a terrific body of work. So thank you, staff. The small additional tweaks that I might recommend here are based on the principle that creating more rather than less flexibility, where it's reasonable to do so, is the right thing to do for homeowners in this context, given so many reasons, given that heat pump equipment is now, with all of the public subsidies available, typically cheaper to install than gas appliances, and creates healthier, smarter, safer homes. So on recommendation number one with garage clear space. You know, EQC's recommendation was for no restrictions in garages at all for electrification equipment, and I still view that as the ideal, but I think staff's recommendation of two, three by three foot spaces should work just fine. Three by three is the minimum footprint needed, I've heard. One caveat is that, and we just talked about this in clarifying questions, is I guess, when I look at those pictures with the green squares there in the back rear corners, it seems to me that there still could potentially be flexibility in some garages, if those green squares were toward the front where the car enters, that there still might be ample space for parking. And so perhaps that warrants a conversation. Anything that can be done to give homeowners more flexibility about how to optimize their personal garage space and sort of pick the car and their equipment that they want, I think is worth delving into a little bit further. My recommendation number two is that staff also allow the placement of electrification equipment in the front of the home. And I think it's very reasonable to allow this only in the circumstance that rear and side setback placement is not viable. The staff report does not make this allowance, but it was one of EQC's recommendation. Again, creating more choice for homeowners in this context, I think is really important. My third and final recommendation is, contrary to EQC's recommendation, based on everything I've learned from staff, I now think that it is absolutely okay to eliminate EQC's noise ordinance recommended edit. I don't think that we need higher noise limits. In fact, I think that the equipment available on the market can easily comply with the noise ordinance, now that I understand better the way that noise is reduced when it's at least three feet from the property line, and also understanding that there are a number of tools that are consistent with good permits that contractors can use, like manufacturer compressor blankets. that contractors can use, like manufacturer compressor blankets, foam, and of course, the enclosures that can reduce.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next commenter, Tom Cabot. Tom, you have three minutes to speak and I will start now. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm Tom Cabot, Menlo Park resident. I'd also like to thank staff for putting together this great set of recommendations and getting folks thinking about it. But I I I want to make the case for allowing more flexibility, especially in the garage, and not prescribing where things are located because some garages aren't rectangles. And they may have wide areas at the front and narrow areas at the back. And so I I think it makes sense to remove the prescription about putting things in something like the rear corners and just allow them to have the the up to two, three by three foot areas to put equipment of their choice. Because once they're in the garage, they're designing it for themselves. And they're making their selections about how many cars to park in the garage and what to do inside their garage. The the parking on city streets is enforced by ticketing overnight. And so that's how we have the motivation to keep our fleet of cars per home down to a reasonable number that we can accommodate on our property. And that stays in place. So then we ought to be given the freedom to manage the rest of our our property inside our walls in our garage without being told what corners to use and whether or not we can put two things next to each other. So I I recommend just kind of removing those constraints within the ordinance and allowing that freedom. The other things going on around us are in two years, the in twenty twenty seven, actually, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District will be enacting a zero NOx air pollution rule for water heaters and two years later for furnaces. When they do this for water heaters, there will no longer be gas tank water heaters on the store shelves. So people will be putting in heat pump water heaters and they'll be wanting to put them in in emergency replacement situations and they'll want to put them right where the other water heater was. And if that was not on a corner, then there, you know, may be confusion at the building department when they go to try to enforce things. And also, I I think we need to be careful that the requirements don't create the need to make building plan check steps in getting heat pump water heaters. And so taking out the requirement that they be in corners of garages and certain corners would help remove the need to have plan checks because it's hard to go get a plan check when you're trying to do an emergency water heater replacement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I do not see any more public comments.
Okay, I think people had ample time during the other speakers to decide if they wanted to make a comment or not. So let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion questions. And ultimately, we are voting on a resolution to recommend to city council to adopt these zoning amendments. Commissioner Fick?
Thank you. I very much appreciate the EQC members and the members of the public that weighed in. I really agree with quite a lot of what was suggested. The, you know, just looking at the at that slide, super helpful presentation. Mr. Paz, that was excellent. Could you pull up slide nine again, though, if you don't mind? Because I'd like to ask about that clear space. I just think there's so many varying locations of other unmovable things. I mean, you can all think of your own garage if you have one. You know, mine has a door to the inside of the house and a door to the backyard in the corners. So pretty typical garage would already need some sort of an exception and, you know, and cause some churn at the permit level that I'd like to avoid. So I'd really like to discuss striking in the back of from the language of the of that garage clear space exception part of this. That's number one. Thank you for that. And then two is I'd like to see how other commissioners feel about understanding that the reason why you'd want to ideally put this equipment in the back definition. Appreciate Commissioner Schindler's defining that. However, there are kind of use cases and unusual situations. And I wouldn't want to unfairly burden those homeowners just because of their particular orientation or design of the garage to make it first choice, the rear, but then leave flexibility in the event that that just doesn't work so that they could still use it for a car if that's, you know, if that's possible. And then the noise ordinance piece, I like that. I like including it. I do think, though, being a little more prescriptive so that it isn't seen as a burden, but seen as a an opportunity that there is clear equipment available that does comply with the noise ordinance so that there doesn't, that doesn't cause unnecessary churn. So really, all three of them are to avoid kind of the individual variance, you know, the very, the varying garage shapes and, you know, sizes and directions and orientations to just make sure that all of these changes fulfill the spirit and intent of what's here, but without so much prescriptive detail that would actually kind of cause more expense on everybody's part and time. So those are my comments. And thank you, EQC members, for your your deep dive into that and making the comments tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferrick. Other? Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. So welcome back, Mr. Paz. Great to see you, hear from you. Could you, through the chair, could you, Mr. Paz, talk a little bit about the the staff's perspective in where the electrical or the electric equipment placement is? What what's it rooted in? Why those places? Educate me a little bit about how you came to that. And I'm referring specifically to the slide that's up on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. And I'm I'm happy to speak to that. And I'll just say to Planning Manager Prada, if he would like to jump in any time, I'm I'm happy to turn the mic over to him. But that being said, I'll dive in. So again, what we were trying to do is balance the needs to preserve the parking, given the parking constraints, and try to facilitate this equipment. So the the rear corners are are the visual result of that compromise.
So having nothing to do with, for instance, loads or access to conduit or because we don't know what's in any one structure simply for the purposes of facilitating the parking, correct?
That's correct, while also enabling a three foot by three foot area for for the equipment so that you can size a forty gallon tank all the way up to an eighty gallon tank within that area.
Thank you. My other question, and I'm going to try to piece this together from a practical perspective. So I live in the Willows. Most of the lots on my street are fifty feet across, which allow for five feet setbacks on the side. And many come together. So you have a five foot setback on one side and then the house, right, you know, contiguous to it, right on the other side of it, to the right, for instance, will have a five foot setback. So having having an encroachment coming in three feet from the side, so effectively noise generation, three feet off of the off of the the subject property, two feet, and then another five feet. And there's, for instance, a bedroom on the other side of it. Tell me if that, was that a consideration? And what are your what are your thoughts or what are staff's thoughts on potential conflict? So, you know, as as I was listening to this, I was trying to figure out what, you know, some examples of what fifty decibels are. And I don't know that it's such a big deal if it's nighttime, but eight feet away with an open window, for instance, by a bedroom. I just want to hear a little bit more about how staff came to the opinion that that's a reasonable distance from a adjoining property, for instance, where you've got, you know, a bedroom. Could you say a little bit more about that?
Maybe, Commissioner Barnes, I'll I'll start here from the noise perspective and then turn it over to Ori if if necessary for any more technical components here. So I I think the there's two parts I'm hearing to your question. So there's the physical enclosure component and some setbacks there. Happy to answer those as well. But from the noise, the city staff is not proposing any modifications to the city's noise ordinance in in Title Eight, Chapter eight oh six, as I mentioned earlier. And so part of the allowance for the encroachments is incumbent upon confirmation from an applicant that the heat pump or other electrification equipment complies with the noise ordinance. So that location from staff's perspective in our recommendation would be acceptable. And we're looking at those enclosures more from, you know, setbacks to the neighboring property, kind of a kind of overall urban design, kind of neighborhood framework there in terms of allowing those encroachments. We're also considering the noise, though, as part of that. So in in no case, well, let me back up. As part of an evaluation of a permit, we would review it for compliance with the noise. That would be a documentation that would be required. And so that setback area or an encroachment of the setback would only be something that we would permit if the applicant documents compliance with the noise.
Thank you. If there's a if there's an existing five foot setback, currently, it's not, is it permissible now on a five foot setback to put some type of cooling or heating equipment? So exclusive of whether or not there's an enclosure on it. But is there an allowance for currently an enclosure for an air conditioner within a five foot setback?
Yeah, it's a great question and I'll I'll take that. So the zoning ordinance doesn't prescribe or regulate the location of AC or air conditioning equipment. So staff does allow air conditioning equipment in the required yards. We do, as part of that permit, once again, verify compliance with the noise ordinance. And as we mentioned earlier, that's sixty decibels during the day, fifty at nighttime. And so an applicant would need to to note compliance as part of an application. So yes, in in practice, there are mechanical equipment that staff does issue permits for in the setbacks, but not enclosures. And and part of this allowance, and Ori can speak to this more, is the need for certain electric equipment to be enclosed from a weather standpoint. There's certainly the added benefit ancillary in nature of having some additional noise attenuation from any enclosure. But right now, staff does permit or issue permits for AC units in setbacks. And that that's relatively common, given where AC units end up in a in a residential configuration, usually in the side yards or rear yard.
Got it. So that that's helpful for me because, I mean, if if HVAC equipment's allowed currently to encroach within the five foot, then allowing for an enclosure around that is only helpful to attenuate the noise from my perspective. So I'm just following on what you just said. Thank you for that clarification. And so I would say that for from my perspective, looking at two of the things that we've discussed here, I don't I don't know. I I would rather have flexibility in terms of folks putting these where they want them in their garage. Because fact of the matter is, is I'd say the preponderance of people park outside the garage anyhow. I mean, next time I meet someone who actually parks the car in the garage, might be in my neighborhood, one of the first. So I think it's, I'd rather protect this than pulling the car in because people might get smart cars. Smart cars take less space than a Ford F-150. And I'm going to leave that up to the homeowner. So from that perspective, I think they're, I'm certainly amenable to a little bit more flexibility in terms of where these, where the electric equipment is allowable in the garage. And then concerns I have about the exterior equipment, based on what I just learned from staff, aren't concerning to me either. So those are my two points. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Ricks?
Thank you. I I read staff's recommendation fairly thoroughly because at at first glance of the title, I was quite curious what this could be about. And reading through the recommendations, I found this to be an extremely thoughtful and well-worked-out proposal. I think nothing is perfect the first time it's published. And I do think that the comment from Mr. Cabot and follow-up comments here from the Diaz do make sense. Particularly, my fellow commissioner, who noted that her existing water heater simply is not in the corner. And it's absolutely true. Unfortunately, I can substantiate that from multiple episodes over maybe thirty years of homeownership that when your water heater goes, the replacement of the water heater is not something you put on the calendar. It's something you do that day. And that's about it. And if you need to relocate plumbing, let alone relocate electrical, and go to the city for approval, this, that is a a big lift. I recognize that the intent here is to maintain a realistic concept of parking per the municipal code, even though a lot of people don't, in fact, practice that way. That has to do with a number of things, including the fact that our homes end up in the hands of others somewhat more frequently than we might like to admit. And that functional parking has to be there for a Chevy Suburban. I mean, people think that they are being green by getting a hybrid Suburban. And whereas I have never particularly thought that was the case, that that's what's going on. And you can now buy an extended cab pickup truck that is all-electric. And you can feel similarly assured that you're being green, but you cannot park it in a less than seventeen foot parking space in your garage. So I find myself without a real recommendation regarding making any changes to the proposal, except that some level of flexibility for the spaces within the garage is going to be realistic. And so I would like to propose to my fellow commissioners and to staff, is it possible that the diagrams that have been proposed would be put forward as approvable by right? But that a flexibility based on administrative review for location based on existing conditions could be included as an alternative? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ricks. Commissioner Eric?
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. I have a question about the allowed encroachments. So through the chair, I think this would probably be to staff. Commissioner Barnes pointed out that I also live in the Willows, so side setbacks are five feet in that. five feet in that neighborhood. And if I'm doing my math correctly, that means that it would functionally be impossible to put an encroachment in your side yard because it would, you can't, you can't go more than, closer than three feet to the side or rear property line. So putting it, for instance, in your side or rear setback might, in fact, not be possible if your existing structure is already at five feet. Am I understanding that correctly?
So I certainly don't want to steal any opportunity for Ori to chime in, but we're going to work as best we can through this virtual and partially in person. But in, your answer is correct, yes. It could encroach, if the required setback is five feet and that home is built at five feet, it can encroach two feet with maintaining that three-foot requirement. But that is partially, and Ori can speak to this more, partially why we allowed that encroachment to either in the side or rear, and also on both sides or either side, since not all homes are up to five feet and five feet at each side for a 50-foot wide lot. Some might be 10 on one side, 5 on the other, or some other, you know, existing condition. But Ori can definitely chime in to our evaluation there in terms of how we ended up with the proposal.
Yeah, I think you did a great job, Kyle. I think the only other thing that I'll add is that we are anticipating that the garage is going to be the preferred location and probably the first preference for most people who are looking to replace their heat pump or replace their water heaters with a heat pump water heater. And that's a function of a number of things related to the actual performance of the equipment, but also looking at, you know, what is the most cost-effective option? And constructing a weatherproof enclosure will be an additional cost. And so we wanted to include this flexibility for folks who may not have garages or may want or need to preserve their garage space. But we are anticipating that the vast majority of these applications will cite the heat pump water heaters in the garage.
Okay, thank you very much. That is very helpful. I will echo the thanks to staff for a great report, as well as to the Environmental Quality Commission for, I think, some great recommendations here. I would say, in the interest of furthering discussion, I appreciated, well, I appreciated all the comments. I think Commissioner Farrick originally suggested giving more flexibility in the garage as to where things should be located. I think that makes sense. I think you, Commissioner Farrick, also recommended allowing for more flexibility with where an enclosure would go. And I think, given this conversation, that also makes sense. And I would be in favor of making it possible to put it in the front setback, should it not be possible to be located in the side or rear setback, given the normal size of how large an encroachment would need to be. I appreciate that you can encroach two feet from five feet. I doubt that anything could really fit in a two-foot enclosure. So I think it makes sense to have a first preference to place an enclosure in a side setback or a rear setback. But I think we should consider recommending adding language that makes it possible to put in the front setback, should neither of those be possible, given existing structures. And I will end my comments there.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. I have a couple of comments as it relates to the parking, clear space encroachments, and then one as it relates to the enclosure placement. The first builds on some of the questions that I was asking in the clarifications and a number of the sentiments that my fellow commissioners have talked about here in terms of providing the homeowners, the property owners, with more flexibility in terms of the placement of those three-by-three encroachments in the garage. I think a number of important use cases have been laid out. Garages aren't always perfect square. They aren't all, they, in some cases, may be significantly bigger than the diagram indicates. Homeowners may have a two-car garage and may choose to effectively give up one of those inside parking spots and still be in compliance with city requirements. So if I can come up with three or four off the top of my head in preparation for this meeting and in listening to the helpful conversation here tonight, that means there are probably dozens, if not hundreds, more. So my, I would like to see the increased flexibility given to the homeowner. And I would love to see if we can do it without creating administrative overhead. So I would be in favor of going so far as to take out the words "back" or "corner", and also taking out the phrase of "non-contiguous". I had a brief conversation with a contractor who said that if you're going to have two different, two different, essentially, areas that are three-by-three, having them actually touching each other or next to each other may actually simplify running pipes and wiring and make it simpler from a technical perspective, potentially lower cost as well. So I think the non-contiguous, I would like to see that struck as well. And I really appreciate why it was there, to maintain the parking, because a decision that one homeowner may make about how they use their garage space might not be the same choice that if the next owner of that particular property might make. And the staff report and the proposed ordinance changes addresses that by asking the homeowner to make a declaration to the city about acknowledging they've made a particular choice. I would love to ensure that that information becomes part of the public record so that future homeowners and people who are looking to buy real estate can easily understand that's been there without getting out of tape measure and wandering around the garage of a potential home that they're looking to buy. I'm not clear on the best mechanism for doing that, but I would definitely like to see that become something that is easily discoverable and searchable where the declarations have been made. That was my second point about the garage clear space. My final comment is just about the external enclosures. I also have kind of wrestled with the great points that have been made by a number of other commissioners about, should the enclosures be allowed in the side yard and backyard? And then what about the possibility of having them be in the front yard? And I weigh in two considerations. One is making sure we don't add administrative overhead. The other one is making sure we give homeowners maximum flexibility. Based on what I know, what's been discussed here tonight by Mr. Paz, what's in the staff reports, we expect most of the implementations to be inside the house, in the garage. Then we would expect the next most implementations to be in the side and rear yard. And only in the cases where neither of those were popular or possible would we probably expect a homeowner to try and pursue the front yard. If there were an elegant way to do that without creating administrative overhead that effectively asks the homeowner to use the front yard only if the side and backyards are not possible, I would be in favor of it. But I haven't been able to come up with one. So if other commissioners or staff has a suggestion for how that would be possible, I'd love to hear it. But absent an elegant solution for creating sort of a hierarchy or waterfall of permissions, I'm comfortable leaving it as just the side yard and the backyard. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks, just, thank you. In just a quick kind of response to that, I guess I'm reflecting on the time we've been on the planning commission, my short time here and then years ago. Most of the residential properties that seem to come have some unique aspect to their lot which is causing them to be in front of us. And so I'm trying to solve for that flexibility. One example I'm thinking is flag lots. Oftentimes, front isn't necessarily what, it has to be evaluated. I'm thinking, you know, my first meeting back here in May, we heard a situation where there is an ADU structure that's wanting to be constructed in what was designated as not the front, even though it's the front. And so, you know, I guess that's where I'd like to make sure that in this case, for these pieces of equipment, in the event that the kind of optimal choice just is not feasible for whatever reason, I just don't want it to be a complete barrier to that homeowner being able to electrify if there's a reasonable alternative. But I don't know how to structure it, so it doesn't seem like 15 layers of decision tree. So, yeah, I just, I think we all agree, it sounds like the consensus around making sure that it's feasible, that it doesn't require this huge administrative lift by staff to like, understand whether it's allowed or not allowed. Like, we want to make sure it's allowed in any configuration wherever possible. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. I think, Commissioner Barnes.
I'm sorry, were you going to? Feel free, I'll go after you.
Sure. Well, I was just going to sum up some recurring themes and one appreciation to staff and the Environmental Quality Commission, and also flexibility. And I'm hearing multiple commissioners supportive of removing any language about corner, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, corner, rear, back, any of the prescriptive language within the garage. And also similarly to, similar extent, flexibility allowing for front enclosures. But I just wanted to check in with commissioners and note those. And Commissioner Barnes, please.
Thank you. I'm reflecting on the fact that sometimes when I leave these meetings, I think to myself, we've got really good staff who think about these things on a day-in-and-doubt basis. Why don't I ask staff for their opinion on something? So I'm going to, through the chair, put Mr. Paz in a somewhat tricky position to say that if you could throw off the, the staff point of view that, just for a moment, think about the garage and think about flexibility and thinking about how added flexibility could be incorporated into the garage and just step away from the lens of having to preserve the parking for the purposes of the municipal code, but looking at it from the standpoint of how as well could flexibility be implemented into that design? And if you could, if you're willing to answer that question and pull up that slide which showed the two water heaters in the upper left and upper right, could you, if you're willing to, offer some suggestions on how flexibility could be incorporated into that in the context of what we've been talking about tonight, so that we could have some subject matter expertise on this?
Certainly. And I'll just look virtually to Kyle to see if he has an interest in napping in, otherwise I'm happy to.
Let me just say, so I think, yes, Mr. Paz, you can definitely provide a response. Just quickly for Commissioner Barnes to kind of set some expectations here. I mean, I think we can certainly provide some options. I think staff's recommendation incorporates our comprehensive evaluation with our experts in transportation, building, planning, sustainability, as well as across other departments and divisions and stakeholders, and considers the EQC, the Environmental Quality Commission's recommendation. So we can definitely provide an answer and Ori can step in here and provide some kind of answers to your pointed questions. But I do want to make it clear that, you know, we can take the commission's feedback this evening on potential changes and modifications and forward those to the city council as part of the commission's recommendation. Staff can and will evaluate those changes and provide an evaluation in the staff report. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ori, but I wanted to make sure the kind of ask from the commission with that specific question, you know, doesn't, there is an understanding that we're here to take the commission's recommendation, forward it to the council. We'll certainly provide the council with an evaluation in the staff report of that recommendation.
Thank you. Point noted. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I was just going to say that the hard part is that the reality is we cannot, we can't not think about the parking. And so I think everything that Kyle outlined or Planning Manager Prada outlined is exactly correct. And we can definitely take this back and kind of continue to evaluate the input from the planning commissioner, from the planning commission, from the EQC and the members of the public who've spoken, and bring that back to discuss with our subject matter experts and see what we can come up with. I can say there was an earlier version that had some agreement that looked at, you know, citing additional parking elsewhere. But ultimately, we decided that this was a little bit more flexible than that and could eliminate some of the regulatory barriers. But I think that there's enough direction for us to have another conversation about this and work internally to find something ahead of the city council presentation.
Got it. So I guess that's the rub, isn't it? I mean, I hate, I'm reticent to be prescriptive from the DIAS about changes that aren't necessarily thought through in terms of impact. So, okay, so if I kind of decode what I think I just heard was, this is our, not only from parking, but from building, from planning, from sustainability. I mean, I was narrowcasting this into just a planning discussion, but it sounds as if there's different departments that have weighed in on this as well. And based on all the different lenses at which this is looked at, it's staff's recommendation that this is the best way to go. And that said, staff just said, okay, we've heard from the planning commission, we might go back and do some initial thinking about it, but this is probably where we're going to land. Did I have my decoder ring on pretty well?
If I may, and I'll just try to clarify some points that Mr. Paz and I also made. Tonight, the planning commission is charged with providing a recommendation to the city council. If, as part of that recommendation, the planning commission includes recommended changes or modifications to the draft ordinance, staff will forward those to the city council. As part of that, we will evaluate those changes and provide, you know, input evaluation in the staff report of, you know, the potential implications, if you will, of those changes for the council to consider. Does that help clarify?
It does. And then it kind of frees me from thinking of, thinking of them as prescriptive recommendations, more like, great, we've seen what's being presented, we have some further enhancements to what's being presented, and please run them through their filters, is essentially how I'll think of it, based on the feedback that we've gotten. And it is only recommendation, it's only recommendation the council that we're making tonight. I think I'm going to beg off a little bit about the more prescriptive parts, although I think we have some language which can talk to some of our desired changes to what's being, or change, potential modifications to what's being proposed here. So those, that's what I wanted to understand about the spacing. I will say I'm not crazy about enclosures on the front of houses without an administrative burden about what those enclosures are, how they look, how they're, you know, what the material treatment is and all the rest of it, because it could get really crazy. And this needs to be ministerial, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of if you do it to whatever code is, you're on your way. And I don't think that this process needs any type of discretionary review. I don't think it helps to have any discretionary review in this process. So for that reason, I think it's too hard not to have, to have a front enclosure without a discretionary review process. So I won't support that, but I do, but those are my thoughts on the interior side as well. And I will draft into, oh, hear what the other commissioners say and be happy to follow along with some of their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. If I can follow up on that, I appreciate you checking in with the experts, staff, on that, and also clarifying that it's a recommendation to city council and that these recommendations would, from the planning commission, would again be communicated through staff's interpretive lens. I will say, there was a comment you said about not comfortable making decisions on the DIAS, I believe I heard you write, that maybe not have been as well thought through. I will say, I am supportive of the flexibility in the garage, and I believe most of us are here, and I feel like the EQC has had ample time to contemplate the changes. And they didn't quite, I believe their recommendation was to eliminate any prescriptive measures or restrictions in the garage. And so this is a, I think, removing the back rear language kind of gets that to a kind of gets that to a more flexible middle ground between what was originally recommended by the EQC. Um, I wanted to respond to the, the front enclosures in the front yard, which is not currently part of the recommendation to city council. I understood from, um, some information that Mr. Paz provided to me that equipment is currently allowed in the front setback as long as it's appropriately screened with landscaping meets the sound, um, ordinance. So it seems like a logical extension that an enclosure in the front would also be allowed. That seems like a similar logic that we're following in the side and rear. And so I, I am still supportive of allowing an enclosure for equipment in the front setback as a fallback if side and rear are not possible. Those are my thoughts on that. Um, Commissioner Riggs.
Would the chair entertain a motion?
I would.
I, I will say to begin with that, um, I do see Commissioner Barnes' point about a front enclosure, if only because an enclosure by definition is larger than the unit it encloses. And having recently been on, uh, websites looking for other kinds of enclosures, I can tell you that most of them are made in China and the aesthetics are not necessarily consistent with the willows and some other locations. So I have sympathy, especially since it's not the, um, it's not the primary expectation that the, um, whether it's a, uh, a heat pump or other equipment would go in the front yard. I can say that the heat pump that I installed, uh, and went into operation about 12 months ago, and that was for HVAC, the larger load, um, is considerably quieter than 50 decibels and is relatively unobtrusive, although it's about three foot six high. It would only be more noticeable, um, if it had a roof over it. So I declined to put a roof over it. I put fence boards in front. So, um, I, I would like to move that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council amending the zoning ordinance for the staff report. But that additionally, staff consider adding flexibility to the location of units within the garage, or maybe we should say within the structure, but I think it's a parking issue primarily, that would allow for such existing conditions as existing piping and electrical locations. And that staff consider the location of enclosures in the front setback subject to an administrative review for architectural control. And I'll note that the words we are using here are front setback. Rather, a lot of buildings, especially older buildings, have room at the front of the home that is not part of the 20-foot setback. And therefore frankly, would be exempt from our careful, careful work here tonight. And I'll ask my fellow, fellow commissioners, did I miss anything? I think we got clarification on side setbacks. Does that address primarily the, um, uh, flexibility requirements? I'm seeing some nods. So I'll, I'll leave that as my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for crafting that, that first, um, and, and capturing the, the discussion here in the additions. Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. Um, before I can make sure that I, directionally, I very much support the resolution that's been put out there. I have a, through the chair, question to staff, um, about the mechanism for how these front yard enclosures might be made, um, subject to a form of administrative review. Is this a question of, if a homeowner was unable to put the external enclosure in a side yard or a rear yard, would the mechanism for bringing it forward as a front setback enclosure be an architectural control? Would that be a use permit or would that be some other administrative channel that I am less familiar with?
Uh, sure. So let me start. Thanks for the question. So if I understood the motion correctly, it would be to consider, um, allowing enclosures in the front setback. And I, I wrote subject to administrative review of architectural control. And so we as staff, we can, we can evaluate, um, what that process looks like and what potential other ordinance amendments may be necessary. So I will note for the commission that currently, um, an architectural control permit requires planning commission review, except in certain zoning districts where it's administered by the community development director. But we can look into, you know, if, wha, what, uh, if the council is interested in moving forward, considering this potential process, we can lay out what that would be. And it may be an amendment to a different additional code section of the zoning ordinance, if that makes sense. So I will also note though, that all of these requirements that would be in the ordinance, there would be a plan check component regardless. And so staff would, through an administrative or ministerial process, I should say not administrative, there is a difference there in terms of like actual permit action and, and review. Through a ministerial process, staff would ensure compliance with, um, you know, all the enumerated requirements in the draft ordinance, if it was to ultimately be adopted by the council, which, you know, in this case could be the enclosure location. So it's also possible that, um, the allowance could be written in a way that would allow for a community development, uh, community development director action without administrative architectural control. That's something staff can evaluate, I think, from here before the city council. And we can look at potential options for the council to consider.
Thank you. That's helpful. And, and directionally, the, um, creating a channel that doesn't require the homeowner to come to the planning commission is a great outcome, um, because we don't want to put additional barriers out there. We just want to make sure that, um, the appropriate review is happening because front yards are precious, as this commission has many times had discussions about. Uh, I was going to ask Commissioner Riggs if he would consider entertaining one small wording change to his resolution, um, which was about, trying to remember the exact phrasing, exist, that was sort of assuming existing locations of mechanical pipes and wiring would be the basis for giving more flexibility if new electrical equipment were being installed. And I would love for a homeowner to have flexibility, even if, um, it was not just simply doing a swap out in the, in the existing location. So if a homeowner were to take the opportunity to proactively pursue electrification and realize that they didn't want to continue to have the hot water heater or whatever mechanical equipment we were talking about in the current location, if there were a better way to optimize their garage, I would love for them to have that flexibility, particularly if they were doing, being proactive. So I would like to see if we could get that flexibility, removing the words back, removing the words corner, removing the words non-contiguous, or at least the concepts, without it being contingent on where things are today.
Through the chair, yes, um, I, I think that's fine. The reference to, um, existing equipment should have been preceded with the word, words, for example.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. And I had understood just when Commissioner Riggs said as existing conditions, not necessarily meaning that your new heat pump water heater needs to go where the, the gas one was, but just take those existing conditions, doors to the backyard, um, old water heaters into account. But thank you for clarifying that. Um, so I believe we have a, a first. Some additional great clarifications following that. Anybody like to, heading for the refinements or possibly even second the motion?
I'm potentially prepared to second, but I would love to get clarification on what the motion currently is. Perhaps the maker of the motion.
Sure, Riggs.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if Commissioner Riggs, I have some detailed notes that I can read back for the considerations. And then the Commissioner Riggs, the motioner can, correct me if I have it incorrect, that maybe we'll do that if that works. Uh, so the recommendation would be to adopt the resolution to recommend, that the city council amend the zoning ordinance, and I won't read all that, as recommended by staff in attachment A with the following modifications. And it would be to consider adding flexibility to the location of units within the garage to account for existing conditions by removing the references to back, rear, and contiguous. And then the second is to consider allowing enclosures in front setbacks subject to administrative review of architectural control. And as I mentioned previously, staff can, can evaluate that administrative review in multiple different ways. So we understand the direction there.
Through the chair, um, if it's helpful, we can remove or replace the phrase, uh, architectural control, because that is a legal phrase. And I sort of grabbed that hastily.
So through the chair, I'll just read that back as I have it. Then it's consider allowing enclosures in front setbacks subject to, and we'll just say administrative review by staff.
That acceptable? That's a, um, yes from Commissioner Riggs. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Eric?
Yes, and I second the motion.
Great. So a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Commissioner Eric. I won't, um, read it all, but, um, reread what Mr. Prada so, uh, put so well. But basically, we will be, we are voting on, uh, adopting resolution to recommend to city council to adopt these zoning ordinances with the two, um, additions that Commissioner Riggs crafted and is re-iterated by Mr. Prada. Mr., Commissioner Barnes, I'm sorry.
Some clarifying questions. I understand a little bit on my end what I'm, what the, what the motion is. So how do, I'm kind of struggling with how to understand the, the languaging around enclosures in the front setbacks with administrative review. Does that contemplate, um, for instance, a nine-foot, eight-inch high structure in the center of the front setback with, I don't know, three or four feet wide? I mean, what's, what's the context? Or is it? Are there some guidelines, boundaries associated with that? The definition of enclosure? How are you defining enclosure? Or as it's, as I understood, heard the motion? Enclosures in the front setbacks with administrative review. What's the definition of an enclosure?
And is, is that a question to?
The maker.
To the maker, or?
All right. The whole idea is to leave it up to planning to judge whether it is a radical departure from the established look of the home. And I'm trying to avoid guidelines because guidelines from this desk, I think, would only end up with some unintended problem, like no ADU in the front setback of a flat lot. So no, in this case, I'm being so bold as to trust in staff to say, no, you can't have a sheet metal painted green. You're gonna have to try to get closer to the shingles. And nine-six would be their maximum.
Correct.
I hope that would be brought down.
Great. So, uh, so that I can understand it. So through, uh, chair to staff. So staff will take this recommendation and then filter it for what enclosure, uh, is it, is it a good idea? What enclosures might be feasible? Like, what is the filter with which you'll look at the, the, contemplate enclosures in the front setbacks? Like, what kind of, what's the work product from that?
So, yeah, I'll start and then, uh, you can definitely turn it over to Mr. Paz. So, uh, sustainability and planning have been leading this effort, obviously, with our partners across the organization. So, um, you know, Ori and I will, will get together after this and, and evaluate. As part of that evaluation, we'll look at, uh, the planning commission's recommendation. And, and we'll look at it in the context of the, uh, general plan, the climate action plan, or other adopted policies and programs. You know, and, and we'll, we will evaluate and bring forward the planning commission's recommendation to city council. And certainly we'll bring forward staff's evaluation of planning commission's recommendation. We'll certainly, you know, take the commission's guidance this evening and, and definitely consider and evaluate, you know, very thoroughly these recommendations. We appreciate the commission's input and guidance. And so we will take, take that into account as part of the overall review, the discussion this evening, um, the public comments, uh, kind of running the whole gamut of the information that we've received tonight and previous nights, as well as internally in terms of our discussion with, um, our experts in other, other departments and divisions. And, and so with that, we'll, we'll forward a recommendation of any potential modifications as we get through our evaluation, um, taking into account, of course, the planning commission's guidance this evening as part of that.
Got it. Thank you. And thank you for, for bearing with my clarification. So, um, I'll just state my thinking on that. I hundred percent, uh, agree with the motion from the standpoint of looking for ways to make it work better, um, in the garage. I, given the open-ended nature of enclosures in front setbacks without, um, boundaries and in guidelines, I, I don't think that's a, um, a prudent, um, recommendation. So for that reason, I won't vote for it, although I do support hardly the first half of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Um, we can either proceed with the first and the second, or did, did you want to, um, propose a modification to that enclosure language? Or just gonna give that option to you.
Thank you.
To, to offer to the maker of the motion, that is.
I appreciate it. I think, um, I, I admire, um, Commissioner Riggs's convictions. And if the motion passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then we'll come back for a second round. But just let it stand or die in a, stand or die on its own merits. Thank you for offering that.
Yes, and thank you for bringing up, um, that, um, and, and I'm glad that staff is paying attention, paying attention and capturing these concerns. So we will now vote, um, on the motion by Commissioner Riggs, seconded by Commissioner Eric. Believe we don't need to repeat that, cause I feel like everyone's clear on that. Um, Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is five. The math right? Five yeses, one no, one absent. Um, and the, the motion passes. So we'll close F, the public hearing, and move to G, informational items. For staff for that?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, um, the next planning commission meeting will not be until October 23rd. And right now, we are tentatively targeting the planning commission's review and recommendation on, um, zoning ordinance amendments to implement the housing element. So these are, um, the amendments that the commission, uh, previously reviewed through a study session. These would be the potential planning commission review and recommendation. So stay tuned for that. We will be sending a notice shortly on that. And then moving forward, the next meetings just for the calendar aren't until November 6th and 13th. A lot of items are in flux, so I won't try to provide any context for which items may be on those meetings, but just want to, they are back-to-back meetings, so I want to just make sure the planning commission and the community who may be listening this evening is aware that with the Thanksgiving holiday, we'll be, we'll be looking at the November 6th and 13th.
Great. Thank you for the heads up. Busy November. Commissioner Farret?
I just thank you for that. And do you know when the item that was continued tonight might land vaguely?
No, at this point, we don't have any insight into that.
Okay. And I just wanted to share informationally that I won't be able to attend on October 23rd. Sorry. And the, and thank you for accommodating me when I was sick a few weeks ago to attend virtually. But the 23rd, I will not be around.
Thank you. Commissioner Farret. Commissioner Eric?
This might be obvious, but with regards to the October 23rd meeting, the discussion there is revisiting things that we discussed at, I forget what date it was, but we had a long discussion, and it's revisiting those based on feedback. Is that right?
Yeah. Let's see. So it would be reviewing and recommending, but certainly, yes, staff has been working, based on the feedback we received from those previous study sessions on, you know, further amending, or clarifying, or updating the ordinance. And so this would be staff bringing back those in a form where the planning commission would be reviewing and potentially voting on a recommendation to the city council for consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then I'll just say, I'm looking forward to that discussion, and I appreciate the work by staff. I know there's a time crunch here to get this in before the end of the year. And I think this is relatively quick work, given the complexity of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Barnes?
I do. And Mr. Prada told me if this is not okay to ask this question in terms of the context of the agenda. When the zoning regulations come back, development standards, whatever's in the housing element, and the zoning updates, is that the purview, is that the time that also the, any community engagement, community amenities plan would come back for that? Or is that a separate work product?
No, this would be focused only on zoning ordinance changes to implement the housing element. I think your other question I might need to clarify with you separately, to better understand the context of the community amenities question. But, but the studies, the, sorry, the review and recommendation is focused only on zoning ordinance to implement the housing element. So those are changes to those zoning districts that we brought forward previously. So with that, like, we're starting to get away from the reports and announcements info items. So perhaps this conversation probably is getting beyond the agendized, non-agendized topic.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prada, Commissioner Barnes. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.